UBSUDDLIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
The Board unanimously accepted staff recommendations. And for the folks looking in on here, Allison Hasty is not present. She is in Wyoming. So we have, the other six Board members are here. So we have comments from Board members. Mr. Seaman, Mr. Dr. Yang, Doug Criddle, Frank Crawford, Gary Criddle. Well, we certainly hope everybody is enjoying this summer. It's already started out like August. So, and we certainly hope everybody who's getting a vacation can rejuvenate themselves. We do know there's a lot of employees at the district that are working this summer, doing a lot of maintenance, and in some cases, more than just a little bit of maintenance. So we certainly appreciate everybody that's working on the district and helping us get ready for the new year. And this is the last meeting of the old year. So we'll move on. We have opportunity for employer organizations to address the Board. Mutu?
Good evening, Mr. Davis, rest of the Board, the few of us that are here and the people that are watching online. I'm Angela Stiegel. I am the President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. And as a reminder, Mutu represents the over 500 certificated professional educators in the district. And I made the trip all the way back to Marysville today. I'm from a conference in Napa. And when we're done here, I'm going to turn around and I'm going to drive all the way back to Napa to continue that conference. But I came here tonight because we still have a message from Mutu that is being summarily ignored. And so I just wanted to remind the Board that 94% of our members voted no confidence in the Superintendent and Dr. Azarani. And for those people who are curious, 93% of our voting members voted in that. So it's not 94% of, you know, some of the surveys that we see with the district that maybe we surveyed 45 parents or out of 10,000. The vast majority of our unit voted, 94% voted no confidence in the Superintendent. And the Board, along with other local entities and institutions, can ignore it, attempt to. You can continue to make no comment on it. That's fine as well. But know that the teachers' union is not exactly going to just take that lying down. And even though it is the summertime, and you mentioned the fact that we have people who are working very hard and hopefully people are enjoying their vacations, that's exactly what we told our membership. Our membership asked about coming to this meeting tonight in full force and showing up here again with signs and signage and bringing out the masses. And I have to be honest, I told my unit that at this point in time, considering the response we're getting from the Board, I think their time is better spent actually enjoying their vacation and their time with their families and their friends and working on their classrooms and their curriculum and their development for next year. But that's just for tonight. We have other meetings coming down the lines and we have other means of communication. We would also like to thank the innumerable community members, parents, alumni, who have contacted us, who have had a response to the vote of no confidence. And it has been refreshing to hear that. But just as a reminder for all of us, we're exhausted. And we're not just exhausted because it's the end of June. We're exhausted also because it is exhausting to raise your voice and to use your voice and to speak out and speak up and be summarily ignored. But fortunately for teachers, we're kind of used to that exhaustion. For professional educators, that's kind of how we live our lives. And so we will not be ignored and we will not be underestimated. And we do thank the innumerable people who are working on our schools and our school sites and working at the district to make sure that, one, our summer session is going well, and, two, that when we all go back in August, things will run smoothly. But we also thank our members for having the courage to speak up. And I will also say that as the President for the Teachers Association, people could try to put a spin on things, and people can try to blame me, and people can try to spread lies about me, but I have the evidence to back up what I say. And I don't see that happening from the other side. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Operating Engineers Local Number Three. California School Employees Associations Number Three, 26 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. Supervisory Unit. Okay, we're going to move to Presentations. 8.1 Nutrition Services Update for the 2023-24 School Year.
Good evening. I'm Amber Green, Director of Nutrition Services. I have a presentation that will play for you, and I'll be available to answer any questions at the end. Thank you for this time. Cabinet and Members of the Audience. I am Amber Green, Director of Nutrition Services, and I am proud to present some highlights of the 23-24 School Year. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. In our presentation, we will introduce our skilled team, highlight some key aspects of our operation, and finish with highlighting the summer meal program that is going on right now. The support staff at the district office includes Nick Dramis, Culinary Operations Supervisor, Kennedy Baker, Nutrition Services Support Specialist, and Camilia Sostito, Nutrition Services Account Technician. We are thrilled to shine some light on the amazing school nutrition professionals that work so hard at all the schools. We have 15 kitchens that produce the meals for all district schools, preschool, the after school program, and three additional campuses for the Yuba County Office of Education Schools. Our site-level staff consists of 15 nutrition site managers, two nutrition assistant threes, 26 nutrition assistant twos, 22 nutrition assistant ones, and five delivery drivers. We thank the Board for the recent approval of the new job descriptions that reclass approximately half of the nutrition assistant staff. This reclass elevated the salaries for the staff completing the more skilled and specialized tasks in the kitchen. This will greatly improve the department's ability to retain skilled employees long-term. The Nutrition Services Department operates an $8.7 million budget under the Restricted Cafeteria Fund. The main revenue source is from the state and federal reimbursement for meals served. Approximately 53% of the budget is allocated to salary and benefits, and approximately 40% of the budget is allocated to food and food supplies. USDA has training standards for food service professionals. Collectively, as a department, we are required to provide 566 hours of training for our team members. We are excited to report that this year we greatly exceeded this requirement and provided over 1,400 hours of training. We make food safety a top priority when it comes to training. On top of job-specific training, we provide in-house training for both the Food Handler Certification and the Food Protection Manager Certification. Additionally, Nutrition Assistant 1 and 2 staff can earn an annual stipend for achieving the Food Protection Manager Certification. Our Culinary Operations Supervisor, Nick, provides culinary and recipe trainings for new recipes. We are grateful for the online meeting format to hold short, frequent trainings to kitchen staff. We use QR codes on all our recipes so staff can easily access the training at any time. Included here are two of our most well-received recipes, maple roasted sweet potatoes and Asian kale salad. We are thrilled to share that we served 1.9 million meals in the 23-24 School Year. Let's break that down, starting with breakfast. Our average daily participation for breakfast is over 3,600 meals. That's a 6% increase over the prior year. Our average daily participation for lunch is 6,300 meals, a 6% increase over the prior year. Lastly, our average daily participation for supper is 870 meals. That's an 8% increase over the prior year. We worked closely with the after-school programs, tutoring, and clubs to expand access to this after-school meal. In the 23-24 School Year, we define local as "California grown," with an emphasis on supporting regional growers and distributors within a 200-mile radius. This year, we more than doubled our local produce volume, and for the first time ever, we added an incredible variety of local vegetables to our program. This has garnered a win-win situation, allowing our students to experience a richly diverse variety of fresh-grown produce, but also allowed us the opportunity to support our local farms and food hubs. This resulted in a 20% increase of our produce expenditure to the local economy. New to lunch service this year was the addition of the A-Z feature on our salad bar. Each week, we focus on a letter of the alphabet and introduce new and unique items for students to try. Every item was procured locally, and we offered this at every school. We were able to try out some new preparation methods for staff to learn, like quick pickling, marinating, and roasting. Students were brave in trying new fruits and vegetables like finger limes, dino kale salad, marinated mushrooms, rainbow carrots, and many more. We are excited to continue this feature next year. The Summer Meal Program is in full swing with five serving locations open to serve all children in the community. We are dedicated to serving kids during the summer, and here are five significant benefits of this program. Number five, health and wellbeing. Consistent access to nutritious foods promotes physical health and reduces stress for families worrying about feeding their children during the summer months. Number four, educational continuity. By providing a stable routine, meals contribute to better academic performance by supporting cognitive development and lunchroom readiness. Number three, economic impact. No-cost meals alleviates the financial pressure on families, allowing them to allocate resources to other needs. Number two, social engagement. Congregate mealtime offers a safe and engaging environment for children and promotes social interaction through communal eating. And number one, support for working parents. Parents do not need to be present. This can give parents peace of mind that their children are receiving a healthy, nutritious, and delicious meal. With multiple meal sites in easily accessible locations, there is no reason not to take advantage of this benefit. New this year are summer meals for rural communities. USDA announced new components to the 2024 Summer Meal Program to enhance and expand access to meals for kids during the summer. We applied and were approved to operate the rural non-congregate program that gave us the resources to travel to the foothill areas and provide multiple days' worth of meals, making it much more feasible for families to participate. There are several challenges to providing summer meal service in the rural areas. Challenge number one, nutritional lifeline. Did you know that higher rates of food insecurity are often more prevalent in rural regions? It is essential to provide proper nutrition to children in rural areas where access to food is limited. Challenge number two, geographic isolation. There are greater distances between home and traditional meal sites, and there is limited transportation options in the area. Challenge number three, limited resources. Because of the remoteness, fewer community resources and organizations exist to support meal programs in the areas for families. Here's what we are doing to overcome these challenges. Number one, mobile meal programs. We use digital sign-ups, flyers on social media, and word of mouth to inform families of the program. The signup sheet allows parents or guardians a way to choose how many meals they needed and what remote location they wanted to pick up from. Number two, partnerships and collaboration. We collaborated with local businesses, a church, and even a fire station to host meal pickup sites. We had our vendors supply bulk milk and bulk produce to help streamline the process. Number three, speedy service. We opted into the parent or guardian pickup component to make it easier for families to receive meals and set up a drive-through format so parents do not even need to leave their car. Nutrition Services believes that summer meal programs are vital investments in the health and future of all children, and we are committed to meeting that need. Thank you for the opportunity to present our highlights from the past year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amber. Are there any questions for Amber concerning nutrition?
Yes. Thank you.
That, uh, the fresh veggie, the salad bar with all the new things, is that, tell me again, is that at every school?
It's at every school. At Lynnhurst, the A-Z format is done more at the line distribution because right now the salad bar is just not feasible in the current setup in that campus, but every other school has a salad bar.
That's great.
So Amber, one of the, I guess, what I heard from, at a meeting, is that some, I'm with the Lions Club, and some of the Lions Clubs are supplementing your supplement. So I saw that you have five days that you prepare those meals for. And they, they're doing like sack lunches or something that, of course, have to be approved by, you know, whatever we have to do. Is there any program like that in the district?
I'm not sure I'm understanding what the Lions Club is, like, providing, like, a food distribution format?
Supplementing you, giving you like sack lunches or something?
Giving, like, my program or giving families?
Into the district program.
I'm not, I don't have a relationship with the Lions Club right now, so maybe it's going straight to the schools?
Mm-hmm, yes. And I, like I said, I was kind of surprised to hear that. And it might be something that we may have a, have a more, a broader discussion.
Sure.
About how to, because, you know, you've given them five days of food.
Yeah, the program that we do is sponsoring the USDA Meal Program, so it's an extension of the National School Lunch Program. And to receive donated goods, typically don't do that. There would have to be some vetting out of where that food comes from and that sort of thing. We're, we work on a reimbursement program, so we get funded after we've served the meal. And the five days of meals is only for the rural locations. The operations in town, the students have to come and dine on-site for those. So it's kind of two different programs that are occurring right now for the summer. But if you have a contact with the Lions Club, I'd happy to reach out to them.
The, the other way to do it would be do donations. Do you take donations?
Like monetary?
Monetary donations?
Sure, yeah. We don't have many donations that come our way, but we'd happy to accept donations for the intended purpose of what aligns with that organization.
Okay, all right. I was just, like I said, I hadn't heard of anything here.
Yeah.
And so this is my opportunity to find out, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to updates by department. Administrators Services, Brian?
Tonight, nothing tonight.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Wearing two hats?
No update for me, thank you.
Now we're going to move down to 10.1. Approval of the June 11, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Gary Criddle. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We have one abstention? No, the motion carries. Now we have Consent Agenda. Are there any other, or any other items in the Consent Agenda that anyone would like to pull at this time? Or have more discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Doug Criddle. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're into new business. Okay, 15 point, oh, there it is. Have to make sure I get to the right one. We're at 18.1. Present the MJUSD Local Performance Indicators Self-Reflection for the 2023-24 School Year.
Good evening. Tonight, you're going to see a presentation on our local indicators. These are a reflection of this school year that will be submitted to the school dashboard, and it's part of our local indicators for that. So we have a presentation.
Evening, Trustees, Superintendent Azarani, Members of the Cabinet and Members of the Audience. I am Amy Stratton, Director of Curriculum Assessment and Accountability. This is an informational presentation on the 23-24 LCAP Local Performance Indicator The State Board of Education requires districts to complete a self-reflection on the local indicators that measure our progress within an appropriate priority area. These results will be reported to the California Department of Education and will appear on the California School Dashboard in fall of '24. Priority Area 1 for the Local Control Funding Formula reports on the basics: teacher misassignments, curriculum, and facilities. In this priority area, we are reporting on our misassignments from the 21-22 School Year. This data is supplied by the California Department of Education, and this is the reporting year we are required to use. Of the 418 teachers, 86% had all appropriate credentials for subjects taught. Out-of-field teachers are those teachers with short-term waivers or missing EL certifications. Ineffective teachers are those teachers on short-term staff permits and provisional internship permits. Incomplete refers to teachers with missing or incorrect information reported in CalPads. Unknown is used when insufficient information is reported to CalPads. And the two additional indicators, all students have access to their own curriculum and our facilities meet good repair standards. Priority Area 2 focuses on state academic standards. In this area, we evaluate progress in providing PD in academic standards and/or curriculum. Progress in instructional materials align to the state standards. Progress in implementing policies or programs that identify areas for improvement of instruction align to academic standards. Progress implementing academic standards adopted by the State Education Board. And success at engaging teachers and administrators during the prior school year. In these areas, MJUSD is considered to be at full implementation phase. Priority 3 focuses on parent and family engagement. This indicator evaluated MJUSD's progress in building relationships between school staff and families, building partnerships for student outcomes, and seeking input for decision-making. MJUSD is considered to be in full implementation phase in building relationships with school staff and families, as well as seeking input for decision-making. However, we are still working on our implementation strategies for building partnerships for student outcomes. Priority 6 focuses on school climate. This data is the result of our local fifth-grade survey, as well as the California Healthy Kids Survey for grades 7 and 9. The results indicated that school safety continues to be a concern for secondary sites. What is also noted is that students have, as students move up the grade spans, their connection to school decreases. MJUSD continues to make investments in our school facilities, a priority. We have installed fencing security cameras, door buzzers, improved support facilities, creating new classrooms, and finding ways to make upgrades in our schools. In addition to addressing the physical safety, we are continuing to support our efforts towards PBIS in our schools. To address wellness of students, a Director of Wellness was hired to coordinate services across the district, which includes providing more training and supports to the outreach consultants who work directly with our students and families. Priority 7 focuses on broad courses of study. MJUSD uses our California indicators to evaluate this measure. MJUS believes that access is available, the rates of our unduplicated students are not necessarily enrolled in our most rigorous courses, in particular our English learners. MJUSD continues to monitor our data and look for opportunities to provide new pathways for students, such as the four-year engineering pathway at Lynnhurst and the four-year medical pathway at Marysville High, starting in the 24-25 School Year. I am available to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Amy? Well, the, the presentation doesn't match the handout, so it's a little...
It doesn't.
This is what we got. Oh, I'm, I'm missing the connection.
Okay.
It was like I'm reading through your, your longhand, and I'm going, where the heck is, thank you, dear. No, it, it sounds like we're making progress. I mean, we still got some work to do.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Rome wasn't built in a day, much less how long it took. But I, I'm certainly hoping that the discipline is, is headed to a better place and that we're keeping ahead of that. And I know, I mean, we're just the administrators, but it seems like, especially this last couple of our board meetings, we've had quite a few disciplines show up here at the end of the year. So hopefully we're working on that. And I know it's, it's, it's a bummer trying to figure out what, what more could we do? And, and I have... to an alternate, uh, facility, when we've, we've deemed that they can't be here.
Right.
Because we need to keep track of them, and, and, because they're still our students. So, uh, but thank you very much. Once I found the right, uh, packet, I'm, I'm fine. So thank you. This was information. Informational. Now we're at 18.2. Approve and adopt the 2024-25 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, and the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents, Parents Annual Update for the Marysville Joint Unified School District.
Yes, so last board meeting, we had our presentation on the LCAP. It's been open and available, and I would ask the board to approve the LCAP for 2425 school year.
Are there any questions for Amy? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford, is there a second? Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Is Eric on Zoom?
Okay.
We're at 18.3. Present the MCAA Local Performance Indicators Self-Reflection for the 2023-24 School Year.
Okay, so the Charter Academy has to go through the same process we just did. They have to present their local indicators. Uh, the principal is at a conference currently, and so I told him I would present for him tonight.
Thank you. I forgot the right one.
This is the Local Performance Indicator Self-Reflection for Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts, being presented in June of 2024. The purpose of this is to allow MCAA to measure and report progress, uh, for the Local Control Funding Formula priorities, and the information is reported to MJUSD and then becomes a part of the California Dashboard information. There are 10 priorities set forth in the LCFF, but this exercise requires we report only on basic services, implementation of state standards, parent involvement, school climate, and course access. For the first priority, we had 1.65 interns this year, meaning we had a full-time PE teacher and a part-time special education instructor who were interns, so they show as misassignments. We had no students without access to their own copies of standards-aligned instructional materials, and no instances where facilities do not meet the good repair standard. LCFF Priority 2 has quite a few tables. They are all different, uh, criteria that we are supposed to rate our progress, and as you'll note here, we rated ourselves a five in everything except the Next Generation Science Standards, and this was in providing professional learning. The next one was all fives, and that was in making instructional materials aligned to the recently adopted standards or framework available in all classrooms. The next one is, um, dealing with implementing policies or programs to support staff and identifying areas where they can improve. We were fives in all of these, again, with the exception of Next Generation Science Standards, which is a four. Uh, for other adopted academic standards, such as CTE, health education, physical education, visual and performing arts, and world language, you will see we vary from three to four to five. Support for teachers and administrators, you see we're solid fours all the way down. LCFF Priority 3 is the parental involvement and family engagement piece, and based on input from parent surveys in creating the LCAP this year, and also in information gained from, uh, parents and staff from the CCSPP grant, uh, process, uh, we self-scored ourselves a four in building relationships between school staff and families, also in building partnerships for student outcomes, and in seeking input for decision-making. Priority 6 is school climate. It asks us to look at data to then tell what it means, and then how we're gonna use that. Basically, we typically use the Healthy Kids Survey data. However, in 2223, our students' data was combined with that of Marysville Joint Unified in total, and there was no way to disaggregate the data, so we could not see useful information for our site. So this spring, we contracted with Covitality for future surveys that will allow us to tailor our surveys and get even more information, target specifically things that we wanna see or know from our students. And the way we will use that is a pre-and post-survey, give it in the fall and in the spring, and it will allow us to actually drill down and see where students are at those times, and if they're in need of any SCL or behavioral interventions at that time. It also allows us to, um, communicate with parents and share information. LCF Priority 7 is access to a broad course of study, and as you see, there are four different boxes. Each, uh, the first is locally selected measures to track access to a broad course of study. The ones listed are what we use. Um, the next box is to summarize the extent to which all students have access, and we feel like the rates of identified subgroups leaves room for improvement, so we have looked at increasing offerings through CTE, language, and advanced placement courses to address this. We're supposed to identify barriers preventing access to a broad course of study for all students, and are probably our largest barrier is the fact that we have only one counselor for all of our students, 7-12, and the needs between middle school and high school are so different, um, that she has to wear a lot of different hats. So we need to utilize some newer curricular aids better to help her. Um, and then lastly, what revisions, decisions, or new actions will we use to ensure access for all? And I think we need to look at a closer, we need to take a closer look, excuse me, at achievement data, including assessment data, to individualize student support, utilize our ninth block better, our after-school tutoring, our study hall program, and student mentors. In conclusion, MCAA is an amazing school that offers its community what they want and need, but there is always room for reflection and improvement. We know what we need to do to improve, so it is up to us to take those steps and create that growth, and we definitely have a plan through our LCAP 2425 to see that happen. The full report is available on our school website at charter njusd.com, and at this point, I would like to thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions that Amber might be able to answer? Well, I'm sorry Eric couldn't be here to...
Yeah, he couldn't be here tonight.
...present this, but I, I'm just impressed with how thoroughly they, um, they know their students. And, um, I, I sat in there on their WASC, and that was one of the things that came out loud and clear. You can always do more. I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's, even if the glass is three-quarters full, uh, there's more to do. But, uh, they're running a, a pretty strong program, and they have been recognized for that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we're at 18.4. Approve and adopt the MCAA 2024-25 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, and LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. Are there any questions for Amber? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Doug Krittl. Second by Gary Krittl. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Amber. Now we're at the 18.5. Approve the federal addendum for the 2425 school year. Amber, again?
Yeah.
Amy, sorry, Amy.
It's okay.
I, starts with an A.
Starts with an A. So the, the federal addendum is, uh, submitted to the federal government once, we have done that. The, uh, California Department of Education highly recommends that the federal addendum is reviewed yearly and comes in to alignment with the, uh, district LCAP. So this federal addendum has been realigned to the current LCAP. Um, there was one section under the Title II that we had to put in some required language that came out of the FPM, and so we added that required language, and we also put in our Title IV, um, Needs Assessment Survey Results. And so this federal addendum is now aligned fully with the 2425 LCAP. So I'm asking tonight to go ahead and approve the federal addendum.
Motion approved by Gary Krittl. Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're at 20.1. Approve and adopt the 2024-25 Proposed Budget.
Um, yes, thank you. So, um, this budget was, um, presented at the June 11th board meeting, and I'm asking that the board approve the 2425 proposed budget for the next fiscal year.
Are there any questions for Jennifer? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford, is there a second? Second by Mr. Steeman. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at public comments. Angela Stiegl.
So, as we know, I'm still Angela Stiegl, I'm still the president for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association, and my partner, Erica Schleschler, she is our vice president, and she has a comment to go along with this chart for this evening. So back in the day when I was president of the association, I was, along with a lot of other people, amazed that we had $9 million left over at the end of the year, but we couldn't get a raise. And that's way back there, 2009. And then it increased. The actual numbers are along the side there by year. So it's always been increasing every year. And we always had that argument about how is it not ongoing funds if it keeps getting bigger? If we keep getting more funds, and, and like, we're not a savings account, right? We're, that tax money was collected for the students of the year that it's in. Those students have graduated. They're on to other things, and they didn't get the benefit of those funds. In 2223, and this kind of goes to that lack of confidence some of us have, um, some of us, not just with the superintendent, but with this board that has approved these budgets in the way that they have, we had $87,648,000 left over in our ending fund balance. And at the end of 2324, it's projected to be $47.6 million left over, and one of the, I, I, all the other numbers are the unaudited actuals, which are, like, you report them to the state, they are for sure. I know you're still calculating for the 2324 year, you won't have those numbers till September, but it's projected from the reports that you've received to be almost half of last year's ending balance. You can see that it doesn't go down normally. You received 8.22% more money because of the COLA, and yet went down so far. You received more money because of enrollment, and it went down so far. I think there's somebody that thinks that unrestricted funds means there's no restrictions on her to spend the funds. But they got spent before our negotiations could happen, and the district stalled on those negotiations. Thank you.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.